Well, we're honored tonight to have Pastor Brian Charles with us. Bishop Brian Charles. I've called him bishop before he was ordained a bishop, but now he's ordained bishop, and we're privileged to have this man of God with us. He's been a friend to me, been a father to me, been there for me so many times, and he's preached for me in Saskatchewan and different locations, whether it was in the building, whether it was in a tent. You always liked to come when it was cold, didn't you? Isn't that the way it was? Oh, no, you told me you didn't like to come when it was cold. That's how it went. Right, right. You can go ahead and be seated for a moment. He'll probably get you to stand when he comes. But we're thankful for the man of God that's come tonight. And pastor's a great church in Peterborough, and he's been serving there faithfully for a long time. My life's been touched because of him and because of his ministry. My family's been touched because of him, because of his ministry. He dedicated my boy, little Judah. We have two Judahs here. My son is little Judah. He's growing fast, though. One day, we might have to flip that around if he keeps that up. So we're going to invite him to come right now today. I'm going to get you to stand again. I know you didn't seat long, but we want to give him a good welcome. We want to give him a good welcome from Ascend Church. Come on, let's give him a good welcome. A big God bless you tonight.
I've been fighting off a little cold, so if you can give me a little volume so I don't stress my voice out. Because I'm going to call this series, it's going to be a preach and teach and screech and series. How's that sound? Praise God. Well, you may be seated. Thank you very much. The Lord is good. It's always an honor to be here. It's always an honor to be invited anywhere to minister. And I just thank the Lord. God's doing good things. I keep thinking today's Friday for some reason. I usually start services on a Friday, but this is good. Praise the Lord. God is good. How is everybody tonight? Are you blessed? Praise God. I said, are you blessed? Amen. Hopefully, we can help you come a little higher. Amen? Praise God. Just add a little. Hear a little, there a little. That's the way it is with us. We want it all at once, but God says, hear a little, there a little. Glory to glory. Line upon line. Precept upon precept. Strength to strength. Amen? So we're going somewhere all the time, and we have to be patient and thank the Lord that we're going somewhere. Aren't you glad you're going somewhere? I was going to hell, but now I'm on my way to heaven. Praise God. Amen? And I'm going to heaven. And I want to get all the Jesus I can while I'm on my way. Praise the Lord. Let's pray. Father, we thank you tonight for the word of God. We thank you for the anointing. We thank you for the answers, Lord, that you've anointed. And Lord, I expect that I've been anointed to. Praise God. And we expect great things. And we welcome the Spirit of God to move in our midst. Lord, we're believers, and believers expect signs, wonders, and miracles to happen. And so we come with expectation, and we give you praise and glory in advance for a great move of your presence. Thank you for the anointing that destroys yokes and removes burdens, Father. Lord, we thank you, Father, that your words, Lord, change lives. Jesus, you said, "The words that I speak unto you, they are spirit, and they are life." Let your words flow through these lips of clay tonight, Father. Let your name be exalted and glorified, Father. Anoint our ears to hear what you would say, Father. We'll be careful to give you all the praise, all the glory, and all the honor. You're worthy of it all, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Give him a clap offering. Hallelujah. We're going to go to Ephesians 6. And Oh, you're going to switch me up? Can I take this off? Praise God. I hope I'm on a long leash. I don't like short leashes. Keep it on. Get me off this thing. We'll take this thing off. Praise God. I like freedom. There'll be no technical difficulties in having to. Isn't that something? Jesus preached to 5,000, and you know, the Holy Spirit just carried the word where it needed to go. Isn't that awesome? Hallelujah. Look at that. Free. Praise God. There we go. Hallelujah. I got to get some, find out where I can go here. How far my leash is tonight? I got a short leash the first night. If I'm good, I get a longer one. Amen. Anyway, we're going to Ephesians 6. And you know, we're living in a time where we need to be strong in the Lord and in the power of His might. Amen? And it's not by might nor by power, but by my spirit, saith the Lord. It's by the Spirit of the Lord. Anything that can be done, that is done in the body of Christ is because of Jesus and the Spirit of God. And He's the head, and He gets all glory. Amen? And we're in Him, and He's in us. And as we live in humility, He gives more grace to the humble. Amen? So if you want to go up, stay down. Amen? He gives more grace to the humble. And every good gift is from above and comes from the Father of lights, with whom there is no variation or shadow of turning. Every gift that we have comes from God. Amen? And anything we can do good is from God and because of God. And when we focus on what we can do and stay in our lane, God will bring an increase. Amen? Don't ever try to be anything that you're not called to be. Just focus on your giftings and hone in on that, and you'll be a blessing to the body of Christ. Amen? Hallelujah. That's all it's about. Amen? And then complement the vision for the body here. This part of the body. Amen? This part of the vineyard. You know, don't be focused on everything else. Be focused on what God has you to do here. Amen? Because you're a platoon of believers. Amen? You're a military camp set here. Amen? In Millbrook. And there's only people here that you can reach. Praise God. Amen? And so you're here to do a work for the Lord. Amen? But we're living in a trying time. I don't know if you've noticed it's a little crazy out there lately. Praise God. Amen? That's a good sign. Because that means when things get worse out there, it gets better for us. Amen? Because he said, "The whole world is being grossed in darkness." But he said, "Arise and shine, for the glory of the Lord is risen upon thee." And that word glory is the Shekinah glory. Amen? The tangible, weighty presence of the Lord. And that's what we need. We need to walk around and overflow with the glory of God. Amen? And people will get touched and blessed and ministered to. You know, when God invades your life, when God touches you, you know, nothing, once you've tasted the Lord, nothing else will ever satisfy you. You know, backsliders are the most miserable people on the earth? Because they've tasted the Lord, and nothing else will ever satisfy. Amen? Only God satisfies. Anyway, I want to get on to my message here. Ephesians, I really love the book of Ephesians. I like preaching out of it. I like teaching out of it. I just enjoy it because I've learned so much through it. Ephesians, the epistle, unveils the mystery of the church. To form a body to express Christ's fullness on earth. To do this by uniting the Jew and the Gentile. Amen? And to equip and empower Christ's victory over evil. Ephesians' theme is about sitting, walking, and standing. Sitting in the authority as kings and priests in Christ Jesus. Amen? Walking in the light in a world of darkness. Amen? Standing for what's right in a world that's gone wrong. Amen? And that's what we do. That's the theme of that book. And I'm not going to preach on that, but I'm just, there's different themes. And Ephesians reveals a believer's position in Christ, a believer's practice in Christ. Amen? We're not only positioned, but we're called to practice in Christ. Hallelujah. So Ephesians covers spiritual and practical living, in my opinion. That's what it does. Now, let's go to Ephesians 6:10. We're going to cover quite a bit of ground these next few days. I got a thing here. And you know, God will set you free, and God will give you revelation and authority. You'll operate in the authority that He's given you. You know, God wants us to understand who Christ is in us and who we are in Christ. Amen? For I'm not ashamed Amen? Of the gospel. Amen? It is the power of God unto salvation. So we don't need to be ashamed. We need to learn and grow and go and be what God has called us to be. We don't have to be like anybody else. We don't have to live a vicarious life. We've got to be who God has called us to be. Amen? I got to be who God's called me to be. I had an identity crisis. Moses had an identity crisis. But God called us to be who He called us to be. And we need to find out, you know, who we are. He loves our character. He loves who we are, you know? But He wants His Son to be unveiled and revealed through us. And I've said it before, I'll say it again. Who Jesus is to you is who Jesus will be through you. Amen? And so if you don't believe, you're not going to see manifestations of God's power. Because you don't believe God will heal, God will deliver, God will baptize in the Holy Spirit. But when you believe, you activate the power of the Holy Ghost. Amen? Because the word of God is voice activated. Amen? And we just think, "Oh, God, you're so sovereign. Do it all." No, He wants us to do it. Amen? We're going to do it for Jesus. Now, Ephesians 6:10 to 20. "Finally, my brethren, be strong in the Lord and in the power of His might." So we can choose to be strong, or we can choose to be weak. And we need to be strong in the Lord, not in our ego. Amen? Because knowledge puffeth up. You ever met somebody that's got a big head? Amen? Knowledge puffeth up. But spiritual knowledge, you see, the Bible says, "Love the Lord thy God with all thine heart." You give the Lord your heart, and He'll take care of your head. Eh? He will. And that's, we give it, you know, we trust in Him. "So finally, my brethren, be strong in the Lord and the power of His might." Why? Because you need to be. "Put on the whole armor of God, that you may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil." There are wiles. There are schemes. There are strategies. There are attacks of the enemy coming against the spirit-filled, born-again believer. And we need to be aware of this. And that's why this letter, people paid their life, paid with their life that we can have these letters in our hands and get us knowledge. Amen? It's the word of God. And he said, "To stand against the devil." We don't run against him. We stand against him. Amen? We stand against his wiles. Hallelujah, of the devil. "For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places. Wherefore take unto you the whole armor of God, that you may be able to withstand in the evil day; and having done all to stand, stand therefore, having your loins girt about with truth, having on the breastplate of righteousness, and your feet shod with the preparation of the gospel of peace. Above all, taking the shield of faith, wherewith ye shall be able to quench all the fiery darts of the wicked one. And take the helmet of salvation and the sword of the Spirit, which is the word of God, praying always with all prayer and supplication in the Spirit, and watching thereunto with all perseverance and supplication for all saints. And for me, that utterance may be given unto me, that I may open my mouth boldly to make known the mystery of the gospel, for which I am an ambassador in bonds, that therein I may speak boldly as I ought." Amen? So it's against principalities. And it's against, you know, principalities that rule leaders of this earth. You know, the decisions that people are making are under the rule of principalities and powers. And they set principles in place and try to get us to walk by them. But we serve a higher king. Hello, somebody? Chief ruling spirits, right? And they're first in rank and order in the kingdom of darkness, and they're under the prince of the power of the air in Ephesians 2:2. They're under his direction. Amen? And he's the king of the kingdom of darkness, but we serve Jesus, the king of the kingdom of light. Amen? And Jesus overcame him. We're not going to, you know, glorify the enemy. We're going to expose him and get some knowledge. Amen? My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge. When we get knowledge, we become strong. Amen? When we use that knowledge, we become victorious and glorious in the kingdom of God, for the glory of God. So there are sects of darkness. You know how there's sects of religion? There are sects of darkness. There's, you know, racial hatred, religious hatred, religious murder, political power. Amen? Politics. They're the new religion of the day. The Lord woke me up in the midst of the night and told me that religion or politics are the new religion of the day. Do you see how everybody's divided over politics now? Wherever you see division, the enemy is at work. Did you see how COVID caused division? The enemy was at work. Amen? Wherever there's division, the enemy is at work. Hallelujah. Amen? And you know, there's political spirits as well. And it doesn't matter, you know, there's the liberal, the conservatives. God isn't liberal. God isn't conservative. Hallelujah. God is true. Amen? And sometimes we can love a political party more than we love people. Hello? And then we hate people because they don't believe the way we believe. And that's what happens in churches and denominations and organizations. But the enemy's brought it right into the world now. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I was praying and just seeking the Lord. And you know, all of this, you know, transgender and all these things that are happening right now? The Lord showed, he just spoke to me. I was, you know, when you pray about things, and you're always in prayer and studying the Word, God will just drop things into your spirit. And he showed me, he said, "The enemy stole our spiritual identity, and now he's stealing our natural identity." Because that's all he does. He won't be happy until everybody's at odds. Amen? But once we restore our spiritual identity, our natural identity will come back to where it should be. I don't care what you are, who you are, what your pronoun is. Amen? When you get saved, Jesus will put the house back in order because he's the master carpenter. Hallelujah. I just want him in the house. And once he comes into the house, he brings order. He gets rid of the termites. Hallelujah. He goes into pest control. Glory be to God. Amen? And so, you know, we need to be careful. I vote for whoever's closest to the side of the Lord. Amen? That's the way I vote. And I don't care which way anybody else votes. Amen? Hello? Because there's division going on. We're called to love one another. Hello? We're called to grow in love, one with another. Amen? Sure to get quiet in here. You think I was going to take up another offering or something? Did you notice that? Praise God. You know, because I'm serving Jesus. Amen? And he told me to love everybody. Amen? Every denomination. I love every denomination. I love every organization. I love every political party. I might not like what they do, but I love them. You know why? Because they're God's people created in His image. Some of you are having a hard time with that. I don't like what they do either. I don't like the deeds of the Nicolaitans, but I love the Nicolaitans, the Lord said. There's deeds that people do that are always going to mess you up, but you don't love their deeds. You love the people. Hello? You know, there's drug lords, prostitution rings, sexual perversions, sex trade, pedophilia, organized crime. All influenced by Satan. Because you can see the fruit of destruction. You're known by your fruit. Amen? And wherever this is going on, there's a spirit at work behind it. You know that? There's spiritual forces at work that are pulling the strings. Just like with drugs, alcohol, any bondage, anything that, Satan's into whatever makes you feel good. And you know, at first, you're in control. At first, you're in control, whether it be alcohol, drugs, pornography, anything like that. You're in control. But then, when it's controlling you, it's no more fun. Because now he's got a stronghold. Because you can't give it up. If you can't give something up, he's got a stronghold. But Jesus can break strongholds. Glory. Yes, He can. And that's what happens. There's a fatal attraction of these fallen spirits. And they associate in groups and gangs and posse's of darkness. Yeah, that's what happens. And it's all the work of the enemy. I'm just touching on a few things here. And there's powers that are authorities and chief rulers, leaders set in place from Satan. They set people in place so they can use them like puppets. The rulers of the darkness of this world. They are ruling spirits of this world. We need to recognize these demonic forces and their strategies and resist them when they manifest. For the weapons, it says in 2 Corinthians 10:4, "For the weapons of our warfare are not carnal, but mighty through God, till the pulling down of strongholds." Amen? You know, there was a motorcycle gang had a clubhouse in our town. And we prayed every Thursday night. We prayed against that clubhouse that it would be shut because we knew they were selling drugs there. And guess what happened? The thing burnt to the ground. You know? I, myself, I believed that was answered prayer. I praise God. Nobody got hurt, but it disrupted what they were doing, didn't it? And I believe that we went after the principalities, the powers, the rulers of the darkness of this world in that area. And we still have to. You know? Think about it. There's a lot of drug addiction and alcoholism and all kinds of things going in our area. Well, I believe we're set up for a great move of God. Because Ephesus was a pinnacle of demonic activity. And that's where Paul had his great, one of his greatest moves of God. Amen? And he rose up, all kinds of leaders out of that place that was pagan worship, all kinds of demonic activity going on. It was a dark, dark place. But that's where he had his greatest move of God. God moves in darkness. Light disperses darkness. Amen? And you know something? I believe that the churches, we're going to get so united in the plan and the purpose of God. We're going to unite to what God's doing. Not what we think God should be doing, but what God is doing. And when we unite with what God is doing, guess what's going to happen? People are going to come in here in the darkness, and they're going to get sucked into the light. Hallelujah. And they're going to have an encounter with God. They're going to have a Damascus Road experience. Praise God. Amen? Because we're united. We're united in the Lord. You notice the devil fights us on our unity? Every revival that comes and starts to move and gets potential and momentum, the enemy gets in there and tries to divide it. Why? Because he knows it's causing things to happen in the spiritual realm. Cities are changed. You're changed. We're changed because of the power of God. Amen? You're carrying the glory of God. You have that treasure in these earthen vessels. Glory. Amen? Greater is He. Jesus is in me. Hallelujah. The Jesus that conquered death, hell, and the grave. He lives right here. And He walks out every now and again. Hello, somebody? And we got to let him manifest and let him out of the house. Praise God. Let him show himself off. Unveil him, it says. Reveal, Paul said about revealing him. It's about unveiling Jesus. Eh? And when we worship Him, when we worship Him, our praise, our heartfelt praise is like a welcoming committee for the Holy Spirit. Eh? Praise God. Man, I'm preaching myself happy. And you know, so these ruling spirits, but we have authority. We have to resist them. And 2 Corinthians 10:5 says, "Casting down imaginations in every high thing, scheme of the enemy, that exalts itself against the knowledge of God, and bringing into captivity every thought to the obedience of Christ." Amen? And just knowing, when we know what's right and something is coming to molest our soul or draw us to do what's wrong, we need to cast it down. Because it's contrary to the will of God. That doesn't mean we become religious, legalistic robots. Hello? We walk in the authority of God. We walk in the liberty that He has given us. Where the Spirit of the Lord is, there's liberty. Where the Spirit of the Lord is, there's liberty. There should be liberty in your life, and you keep that liberty. You cherish that liberty. Like David cherished the anointing. He cherished the anointing. There was nothing more that he wanted than the presence of the Lord. "This one thing have I desired, and that will I seek after all the days of my life, that I may dwell in the presence of the Lord." You know why? Because everything you need is in God's presence. You think you need things, but what you need is God and God's presence. "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want." See, the devil just tries to, you know, dangle things out in front of us to get us, knock us off the course God has charted for us. But God wants you to win. God creates winners. Amen? We're winners in Jesus. And the Passion Translation says in 2 Corinthians 10:5, "We can demolish every deceptive fantasy that opposes God and break through every arrogant attitude that is raised up in defiance to the true knowledge of God." "We capture, like a prisoner of war, every thought and insist that it bow in obedience to the anointed one." And that says, "We have to do something." in obedience to the Anointed One. Woo! And that says, we have to do something. We have to do something. See, it says, "Life and death are in the power of the tongue." Right? It doesn't say it's in the power of the Holy Spirit, or in the power of God. Amen? It doesn't say it's in the power of Jesus. It says, "Life and death are in the power of the tongue, the power of your tongue." Life and death are in the power of your tongue, and you're created in the image of God, and God spoke and saw. And you speak and see. But it has to be in line with the Word of God. Hallelujah. And that's what happens. Praise God. And you know, if you're waiting for God to just come and fix up everything, you're dreaming. You're living a lie, because that ain't gonna happen. Hello, somebody? You gotta do your part, and He will do His. You see, there has to be an action before there's a reaction. Faith without what? Is what? Dead. You don't do anything? Dead. You do something, you activate the power of God. Yes, sir. Everything Elijah did was because he obeyed the Word of God that he got in the Spirit. And when he acted on what God told him to do, bang. Jesus said, "I only do what the Father tells me to do. I only say what the Father tells me to say." And what happened? When he did what the Father told him to do, there was a powerful activation. Get the mind of God, and do what God tells you to do. And there'll be an activation of His power. Yeah, on a personal level, amen? But on a corporate level as well. Glory be to God. And we have to do our part for God to do His. You know? And that's because we can just become another bless-me club. Amen? And sit in here and say, "Lord, send them." And the Lord said, "Go ye unto all the worlds." He said, "Go," we say, "send them." I know it doesn't happen here, only around our area yet. But we can say both. Amen? Hello? And God cast Satan. Where did He cast Satan out of? Yeah. Why did He cast him out of heaven? Because His thoughts and plans were contrary to God's thoughts and plans. And God tells us, "Casting down imaginations, and every high thing that exalts itself against the knowledge of God," because we need to cast down the plans that He has that are contrary to the plans that God has for us. "Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven." If it's contrary to the will of God, cast it down. If Satan says you're not gonna get healed, cast it down. If Satan says your bills aren't gonna get paid, cast it down. "But My God shall supply all your need according to His riches in glory by Christ Jesus." By Christ Jesus. Let that sink in. By Christ Jesus. What does that mean? The anointed word. When you speak the anointed word, when you do the anointed word, your needs are met. There's not a play on words. Those words are all there for a reason. Amen? "He shall meet all my need according to His riches in glory by Christ Jesus, the anointed word." Hallelujah. You gotta speak the word if you want a manifestation of God's power. Amen? We do. It works. I see it happen all the time. Amen? That's why God cast Satan out of heaven, because His thoughts were contrary, His plans were contrary to God's plan. And that's why we take authority over Him. We have authority. Jesus gave us authority. Jesus didn't die in vain. He didn't die in vain. He transferred the authority over to us, the church, the blood-bought church. There's two churches. There's organized religion, and there's the blood-bought church. Hallelujah. And there's a blood-stained banner. Woo! Jehovah Nisa, my banner, He covers me. Amen? And we have to utilize, and look over, and cast down thoughts that come that are contrary to the enemy. I had one guy come to me and say, "Pray for me, I'm having crazy thoughts." I said, "Pray for me, I have crazy thoughts too." You know why? Because the enemy's never gonna stop messing with your head. Because your head's the doorway to your spirit. And if he can mess up your head, he can mess up your spirit. And the Bible says, "Walk in the Spirit, and you shall not fulfill the lusts of the flesh." You wanna live in the Spirit, you wanna walk in the Spirit, you wanna talk in the Spirit, you wanna move in the Spirit. You know, time just flies when you live in the Spirit. Amen? And when you're living in the Spirit, you're living from the inside out. And if the inside, He said, "If the inside of the cup is clean, the outside will be taken care of automatically." And so, we have a lot going on up here sometimes, don't we? Women a little more than men, because they like to analyze things, that's all. Easy, easy. I'm getting out of here tonight. No, but, you know, listen to me. This is, the University of Minnesota says that we process 1,500 thoughts per minute, some conscious and some subconscious. Think about that. So if the enemy is speaking to you, you know, okay, faith cometh by what? And hearing by what? The Word of God. Fear comes by hearing and the word of Satan. You ever notice Satan will tell you things over and over and over again? Because he's repetitious. He knows there's power in the repetition words spoken to you. And if you believe what he says, "As a man thinketh in his heart, so is he." He gets to your head, and tries to get it into your heart, and if you believe, "I'll never be healed," you'll never get healed. If you believe you won't get delivered, you'll never get delivered. You know that? He'll drill thoughts into your head, and have you believe them more than you believe God's word. "And if God be for me, who can be against me? But I better be for God." Hello? You know, "I better be for God." And you see, I believe that sometimes. This came to me, when I read that, I thought, wow. Wow, wow, wow. Because if you listen to the enemy all the time, not only when you're not thinking His thoughts, in your subconscious, they're already there. And you ever notice fear will grip you, and you'll just go for a, you'll have a panic attack, or an anxiety attack. And I believe it's because of our stinking thinking, which comes from the enemy. But we have authority over Him, and we need to cast Him down. The Bible says, "How much more shall the blood of Christ purge your conscience of dead works, undeserving the living God?" Not the dead God, the living God. Not the God of death, the living God. He'll purge your conscience. That means purge things that shouldn't be there. Eliminate them because of the blood. "And they overcame Him," who? Satan. "By the blood of the Lamb, and by the word of their testimony, and they love not their lives unto death." Our testimony is His testimony. We overcome by what He did, not by what we can do. "I can do all things through Christ Jesus, which strengthens me." Amen? "The word and the anointing, which strengthens me." I can do all things. Whatever He's called me to do, I can do. And you'll succeed when you do what God tells you to do. You won't get burned out, you'll be burning up. Amen? You see, you're doing it yourself. You're toiling in the flesh. Hey? Just toiling away and burning up. Burning out. You should be burning up. Hey? Praise God. I had some obstacles today. I had my day all planned out. I thought, "I'm gonna get to my hotel room by 1 o'clock, and I'm gonna have a nap." You know? "I'm gonna get up and study a bit more, and pray a little bit more," and everything went the opposite way that I wanted. But then I got thinking, "Well, God, You always give me the grace I need to do whatever I gotta do," so I just went on my merry way. Went and got to Tim Hortons. Hey? I was being scriptural, 1st Timps. That's okay. Amen? So, if Satan can dominate your thoughts, he can dominate you. If you allow Satan to dominate your thoughts, and he'll be like a ventriloquist. Amen? And you're the dummy, acting out what he's telling you to do, and his cohorts that are inspiring you to say or do things. You see, Satan's a nobody. He doesn't have a body. He's looking for a body to operate through. That's what he does. He's looking for a body to operate through and cause problems. You know? And this is how he moves. TIS, T-I-S, okay? Acronym for Thoughts, Ideas, and Suggestions. That's how he moves. He moves on thoughts, ideas, and suggestions. And that's how he's always moved. And he moves through deceptive order that way. And deception wouldn't be so deceiving if it wasn't so deceptive. Praise God. And, but we have to babysit our mind. Amen? Your thoughts can become His thoughts, and your words can become His words. But your thoughts should be God's thoughts, and your words should be God's words, because you have the mind of Christ. Don't lose your mind. Come back to your spiritual senses. That's why churches are dead. They're living in the carnal mind, which is that enmity with God. They need to get the mind of Christ. The preacher needs to get the mind of Christ, and give the people a piece of Christ's mind. Hallelujah. Romans 8:6, "To be carnally minded is death." See, the enemy knows that. If he can keep us thinking on things that are contrary to God, but to be spiritually minded is life and peace. Hey? You know, I've had the enemy. Ever had him take you for a dark ride mentally? Sometimes, you know, hours go by, and I'm like, "What am I doing?" Reasoning, questioning. Hey? Having a mental, you know, that's why it says, "We wrestle not." That means close-quarter combat. That means sometimes there's a wrestling match going on in the arena of your mind. Praise God. It's good to say amen, you know, you're just in agreement with me. But, you know, so, it's about God's thoughts dominating your inner man. Okay? Dialogue is an exchange of ideas and opinions, conversation, converse, right? When you expose the works of the enemy, you weaken him, and you dismiss him. You're exposing him. Hey? Yes. And dialogue is the one who talks, right? While dialogue is how they talk to each other. Don't have dialogue with the devil. Hello? That'd be a good book. I was thinking about that. Amen? So, if you listen to the enemy long enough, this is a great truth. His thoughts become your thoughts. And His actions become your actions. That's the same with God. And that is what, you know, we want to operate with the mind of Christ. Let God's thoughts become our thoughts, and God's actions become our actions. And you notice, everything is, you can look at the world, and everything's based on good and evil, isn't it? And you can see who's acting out. Well, who are they acting out on? They're following something. They're under, they're under the influence of a spirit. Spirits filled, not spirit filled. How do you like the message so far? We're going somewhere. Amen? But we have the mind of Christ, and we have the fruit of the Spirit, which produces self-control. Now, a lot of spirit-filled Christians, they love the gifts of the Spirit more than the fruit of the Spirit. Wow, it got quiet real quick. But you know what? If you have the fruit, because you're hooked up to the vine, amen? You'll have love, peace, self-control. Hey? That word's not a bad word. But you see, when you get filled with the Holy Spirit, most people that their life was a mixed-up mess, and when they come to know God, they got filled with the Holy Spirit, and what happened? They came into self-control. Satan wasn't controlling them anymore. They were in self-control, because the Holy Spirit was on the inside, working on the outside. And that's what He does. He changes things. We're changed by His glory. We're changed by the power. That's why we praise Him. He changed us. We can't change ourselves. You're trying to change your husband, give up. You're trying to change your wife, give up. Give them to God. God can change them. "Cast all your cares upon Him, for He careth for you." Don't try to, you know, browbeat people into changing. I see some people, "Just get married, you're living in sin. You're living in sin. You're living in judgment." Zip it. Pray. Love. Whoa. Amen? Because if they don't have Jesus, and they get married, that doesn't change anything. Does it? Man, you want them saved. Amen? And then, a three-quarter strand is not easily broken. Jesus becomes the center of everything, and they're gonna do what's right. Amen? Praise God. I just took a little rabbit trail there, but somebody need to hear it. Praise God. I figure when God takes me down a rabbit trail, somebody needs to hear it. Amen? And if I'm stepping on your toes, you're standing in the wrong spot. Amen? Praise the Lord. Amen? Try to, you know, because I used to browbeat my kids. I was a legal beagle. Anybody ever been there? Anybody bound by legalism? I'll admit it, I was legalist. And if you didn't do what I do, hey? If you didn't follow the rules that I follow, hello? Amen? And every time I seen my kids, I tell them what they should be doing. Hey? Or shouldn't be done. And God said, "Why don't you tell them what they can do?" Every time I came, you know, you come to me, "How would you like it if I just told you, you know, what you shouldn't be doing?" And He woke me up. He snapped me out of it. Praise God. You know when your heart's right, and your head's wrong? He'll straighten things out for you. See, Saul's heart was right, but his head was wrong. And he was murdering Christians, and God thought, "Man, I can turn this guy around. I can use him. He loves me." You ever notice how many people, it doesn't say how many people he was responsible for having killed, because we would kill people and justify killing them. Hello? I believe that. You know? But he became, he was a murderer who became a minister. Mm. Praise God. Yes. Praise the Lord. Thank God for him. You know? And so, we need to be mindful of the things that are coming against us. And now, in Ephesians 6:13, we're gonna wind down here in a minute. I know you wanna get out before 10:00. "Wherefore take unto you the whole armor of God, that you may be able to withstand in the evil day; having done all to stand, stand therefore." Notice, the armor is for the believer to withstand and stand. Paul told Timothy in 2 Timothy 2:3, "Thou therefore," or 2 Timothy 2:3, "Thou therefore endure hardness as a good soldier of Jesus Christ." You see, we endure. We have the spirit of endurance. We overcome hardness. We overcome hard times. You know, that hard time that you're in's gonna turn into a blessing. That hard time is gonna make you stronger. It's gonna make you immovable, unstoppable. You're gonna stand firm. Your roots are going deeper. You're getting stronger. Hallelujah! The anointing is becoming stronger in you as you stand, stand, stand. Yes. And He said, and the Passion says, "Overcome every form of evil as a victorious soldier of Jesus the Anointed One." Now, we have the spirit of endurance, the same spirit that Jesus had. Jesus of Nazareth yielded to the Holy Spirit. And we, you know, how many want it now, all the time? Am I the only one? You know, we always want it now, but God doesn't do it that way. He wants us to stand, stand, stand. Why? Because He's gonna do it His way. He's gonna get the glory. If we could figure it out, we wouldn't need Jesus. I've tried to figure things out and do them my way, but I need to do them God's way. You can do them your way, or Yahweh. I like Yahweh. I've learned over time, it's better to go His way than my way. I remember one time, I had some people causing major trouble in our church. And I used to just go and, you know, you have a bit of a prophetic anointing, you can see what's wrong, and you just wanna go in there and fix it. Hey? And I'd be like a bull in a china shop. And my wife would go, "Why don't you pray about it?" And I knew the problem, because I knew the word, and I knew the answer, because I knew the word, but I didn't have the spirit that God had in it. Hey? Because the Bible says, "Speak the truth where?" In love. And I went in with all my knowledge, and I was hurt people and harmed people, because I knew what was right. You know? But I wasn't in the right spirit when I did it. So then, this next situation that came along, it was a doozy. Big trouble in my church. I don't know if you've ever been there, because sometimes the pastor will become the pester. Sometime the pastor will go from hero to zero on a regular. Amen? Anyway, so, I had these people causing major difficulties in my church, and so, I went to the board and told them what was going on, and I said, "I wanna pray about this, you know, before I approach them, but I want you to know what's going on, and I'm gonna ask these people to leave the church, because they're not happy here, they're causing nothing but trouble." You know? If you're a troublemaker in an assembly, go join the legion. Hey? Because you're going one direction, you need to get on board. Amen? Or maybe you're in the wrong tribe. You know that? Because sometimes you can be in the, I've had people in our church, they don't belong in our church. They belong in another church. You're causing trouble here. You don't fit in this church. You don't fit in this tribe. Amen? We're doing this. This is our anointing. This is what we do. And you're doing that. So maybe you should find another church. And some people are a blessing when they come, and a bigger blessing when they leave. Praise God. I want you where God wants you. I had somebody saying they wanna come to our church now. I said, "You know what? I want you where God wants you." That's what I want. I said, "We're buddies, we're friends, no matter what, but I want you where God wants you. I don't care about having a few more people in my church. That doesn't do anything for me anymore." You know? You know? I want people where they should be, and I want them to be the best that they can be. You know, so then, I prayed about it, and they, you know, and it was funny, I didn't even have to talk to them. I didn't even have to talk to them. We were actually having a meeting, and they came in in their pride and their arrogance, and said, "Here's the key to the church, we're leaving." And I said, "Well, I'm sad to see you go, but I hope you find a church where you, you know, will be an asset." And they said, "We are the church," and walked out. So I didn't even have to do nothing, because I prayed about it. And God took care of it. Amen? And everybody that prayed about it was standing there going, "That was easy." Amen? So nobody's feathers got ruffled, because sometimes, when people are under demonic influence in your church, okay, keep this in mind. okay, keep this in mind, if you're troublemaker, and I know there might not be any here, or they may be undercover. I don't know. Anyway, but if you're, you know, because you're under a demonic influence and there are people that will leave a church and they'll cause all kinds of trouble when they leave. And you know what that is? It's a demon. The same demon that was cast out of that boy that ripped and tore on his way out. That demon that is being removed out of the church will rip and tear on its way out, trying to cause as much damage as it can before it leaves that part of the body. That's good preaching. But it's true. It's true. Okay, so, you know what? It's getting late, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pack up right here. I'm gonna pray for some people. But tomorrow's the 17th, isn't it? Man, I could stay here for a month. Maybe I will. Maybe I'll start my own church down here. No, that's not a good thought. Just kidding. Praise God. Anyway, getting back to where we're, I'm gonna leave that there because we have a lot of ground to cover and I, I want to get it done within these next two days. You guys are gonna keep me busier than a one-armed paper hanger here. Because I got a lot of ground to cover and I was, you know, but, did you enjoy where we went tonight? Because it's gonna get, it's gonna get deeper. It's gonna get deeper tomorrow. We're gonna go in and we're gonna dissect the armor of God. Okay? The armor of God. We're gonna dissect the armor of God. And we're gonna just do that, but we're gonna go to some other places as well. And we're also gonna expose some spirits and things as well, identify things. You know, God gives us his identity through his redemptive names, right? He's Jehovah Rapha. He's the Lord thy God that healeth thee. If he wasn't, he'd have to change his name. He's our righteousness. He's Jehovah Tisgadae. He's our righteousness. I'm righteous. I might not think I'm righteous, but I am righteous. I might not feel righteous, but I am righteous. And he's Jehovah Rapha. I might not feel healed, but I am healed. Because I'm just as healed as I am righteous. Hello? And when we get our mindset in that way, because we don't have a problem believing that we're righteous, we have a problem believing that we're healed. But it's a package deal. It's an all-inclusive package deal that Jesus gave us at Calvary's cross. It's called the Salvation Plan. Amen? And I want to get all I can out of it. I want to get, forget not the benefits. Amen? How many work for a union or have benefits? You don't forget your benefits, do you? You know, go get a massage or something, because I got benefits and I'm gonna use my benefits. Where are you going, babe? I'm going to get a massage. Because my company's paying for it. I got benefits. Well, I'm going to get healed because Jesus gave me benefits to be healed. I'm going to get delivered because Jesus gave me benefits. For I determined to know nothing among you, save Jesus Christ and him crucified, because everything you need is in what he has done. It is finished. And we've entered his rest. We rest in everything that he has done. When you rest in everything that he has done, amen, the rest will be done for you. Amen? We don't have to wrestle for anything. David said, "I was young and now I'm old. And I've never seen the righteous forsaken nor begging, Brad." Amen? Nor his descendants begging. We don't have to beg. Amen? We have what God has for us. It's ours. Amen? I'm closing out. And I pray that everybody is where they should be with God. You know? Anyone watching online, I just want to give you an opportunity to make peace with God, because, you know, two people in our, two, two members of my church, both parents have passed on. Different family members have gone. This week, gone off into eternity. You know that? Once, once, that's it. For it's appointed unto man, wants to die after this, the judgment. There's no more second chances. That's it. You're either gonna be escorted into heaven or escorted into hell. But without Jesus, amen, you're gonna be escorted to hell. With Jesus, you're gonna be escorted to heaven. There's no other way. You know, the world, the world says there's many ways. You know why? Because the devil tells them there's many ways. But God says, there's one way. And there's one way. It's Jesus. It's Jesus. Amen? And if this type of preaching offends you, the devil's got a hold on you. Amen? And neither give place to the devil. The Bible says in, in 4:27 Ephesians, neither give place to the devil. You know, he doesn't have a place unless we give it to him. And I'm doing my best not to give him a place. He still attacks me. But I'm not giving him a place, because I, I'm the healed fighting off sickness. I'm the delivered resisting sin. Amen? I live in chronic resistance. Submit to God, resist the devil, and he will flee. I'm submitting to God the best I can and the devil has to flee. Or the Bible's not worth the paper it's written on. But I'll tell you, I'm still free. Whom the Son sets free is free indeed. I'm still free in my actions. Amen? Hallelujah to you. Glory be to God. I'm coming back tomorrow night for some more of this. Praise God. It's good to be here with family. I feel like I'm at home preaching to family. Amen? I hope you feel the same. Amen? Can I borrow your car? You lend me a hundred bucks? Praise God. I'm just kidding. Amen? Praise the Lord. If you're watching online or you're here tonight and you've never experienced God's presence, all you have to do is ask the Lord to forgive you of your sin. We're all sinners. We're all natural-born sinners. And there's only one antidote for sin, and that's the blood of Jesus Christ that was shed for you. And we all need to be, I'm not ashamed of the gospel of God, for it is the power. Amen? Under salvation. Hallelujah. First to the Jew, then to the Gentile. It's the power that will save you. And you need Jesus. And all, he's not mad at you. He's not mad at you. He took all of your wrath. He took all of your judgment. He even went to hell for you, so you don't have to go there. What an awesome God. He's worthy of it all. Amen? He's worthy of all praise, glory, and honor. Amen? And all you have to do is say, yes, Jesus, I receive you as my Savior. Cleanse me with your blood. Come into my heart. Fill me with your Spirit. Take my life. Take me on an adventure. You're gonna be on adventure for the rest of your life when you choose Jesus. Amen? He'll open doors that no man can open. He'll close doors that no man. Amen? Hallelujah. Because he cares for you. He'll protect you. He's not a child abuser. He looks after his children. It doesn't matter where you've been. It's where you're going. Amen? And when you come to God, he'll change things for you. I've gone to places I've only dreamed of. Amen? The Lord is good. Praise God. So accept Christ as your Savior. I wanna, can we play some music or something and maybe pray for some people? I don't know. Does anyone need prayer here tonight? Yeah, praise God. Because I know somebody. You see, I'm just a nobody that knows a somebody. You know that? I couldn't heal a fly with a headache. But Jesus can heal you. Amen? Jesus can meet all your needs. See that? The steps of a good man are ordered of the Lord. These are new shoes. I'm just learning to walk in them. Amen? Praise God. I got ahead of myself. If anyone needs prayer for anything, I want to pray for you. Amen? Hallelujah. Let's believe the Lord. Let's get in a spirit of prayer as well. You know, when we pray in the Spirit, we think in the Spirit. We walk in the Spirit. When we pray in the Spirit, we're in agreement in the Spirit. Even though you don't understand, pray in the Spirit. Amen? When we pray, you know, when I pray in the Spirit all day and God gives me the interpretation when I preach? That's what I, I believe he does. He gives the interpretation of what he wants to do. You know that? Because we practice the presence of the Lord. Amen? Come on, Jesus is in the house. The power of God is here. Close your eyes and look to Jesus. Hallelujah. You know what God just said to me? Get him to pray, because there's gonna be a shift in the atmosphere. You know, I believe I hear from the Holy Ghost, pray. See, he said there's gonna be a shift. So when we pray in the Spirit, we're praying God's word and God's word will never return void. God will hasten his word and when he says something that he will do, he'll do it. And he said, pray in the Spirit. I'm gonna shift. I'm gonna change the atmosphere. Father, I pray in the Spirit. We pray in the Spirit, just like you instructed us to pray in the Spirit. Hallelujah. We can't do nothing without you, Lord. We need you, Jesus. We need your power. We need your presence. It's all about the cross. It's all about what you've done, Jesus. It's all about you, Jesus. I feel the presence. Hallelujah. Come, Holy Spirit. Come, Holy Spirit. Come, Holy Spirit. Come, Holy Spirit. Shemo lo ma ya. We don't want to do anything without you. We need the Spirit of God. We need the Spirit of God to destroy yokes, remove burdens. Shama shibo. Thank you, Lord. 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 Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Come here, sister. Come on up here, sister. Come on, brother. Just lift your hands to the Lord. Yes. You know what word keeps coming to me? Experience. Experience. Lord, give her everything she needs. Give her that experience she's been seeking you for. I can't give it to her. You can. You said it's hers. Whatever that is she needs. Yes. There it is. You're gonna have visions. Amen? You're gonna have visions. Godly visions. When you have a godly vision, you're in the moment with God. You see what God's gonna do. You know what God's gonna do. You think of things that God has done. Lord, give her that experience. Whatever it is she needs, give it to her. In Jesus' name. I release it in Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. There it is. Hallelujah. Come here, brother. Hallelujah. Praise God. Lift your hands to the Lord. Amen? I just felt like there's a shyness. Like maybe an intimidation of some sort that's hindering. You know, but there's a, you're gonna break out. You're gonna break out, man. Yeah. Be loose in Jesus' name. Be loose. Come to the potential of God in Jesus' name. Come. Come up. Come out. Be free. All fear and torment, every spirit of fear that has wrapped itself around you and strangled you, be loose in Jesus' name. Be free. And Lord, I thank you for that boldness, Lord. I thank you for him coming out of that shell. Coming out of that shell. Therefore, if any man be in Christ, he's a new creation. Old things are passed away. All things have become new. Hallelujah. Amen? You're gonna talk more. You're gonna laugh more. You're gonna celebrate. You're gonna get a revelation, my friend. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. It's sealed in Jesus' name. More, Lord. More, Lord. Don't pray right now. Don't pray right now. You know why? Because I'm just gonna, in Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. The battle's been won. The battle's been won. Jesus won the battle for you. He's pouring into you right now. He's pouring in and he's washing out. He's flooding out. I see stuff flowing out of you, man. Flowing out of you. He's washing. He's flooding from the top of your head down to the soles of your feet and things you're dispersing. Ha ha. Glory. More, Lord. God's real now. God's real. God's real. God's real. Praise God. I got nothing to give you but God. That's all I can give you. Amen? Praise God. Hallelujah. I want to pray for you. Do you need a creative miracle? Is that what you need? Lord, I pray for my sister right now, Lord. I pray for the working of a miracle. It's your miracle. It's your work, not mine. I, I, I agree with your word. I agree with the power of the Holy Spirit. I agree with the word of the living God and I pray for the working of a miracle in her life. I pray for the anointing, destroy every yoke, remove every burden. I thank you, Father, for touching her. We pray the prayer of agreement for our sister in Jesus' name. We thank you for the anointing. We thank you. It's not by might nor by power, but by my Spirit, say it, the Lord. Are you native? No? Italian? More, Jesus. More, Jesus. Let her see. Let her see you healing her at Calvary's cross. Let her see the word coming alive for her. Lord, come on. Thank you for it. Thank you for it. Visit her. Let it be a medical miracle for the glory, for the glory of God in Jesus' name. Shiba 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 kokoma yate. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Flutter, Lord. Flutter. Amalamande kiki baba sibobo yoto. Abalaboko koriyamati kabata kabata bataboyoto. Abalabati kata mata kakata bobo bo bo yoto. You know, we had a lady get out of a walker. She was crippled. Amalamasi kobo bo bo yaba yaba yate. We've had that happen twice. Three times I've seen people get creative miracles. Seen a guy on death's bed get up, totally healed. Go home the next day. Put on 30 pounds overnight. Shama kiki basabaki yate. Bless my sister, Father. Bless her. Let her trust you, let her believe you. Help her with her unbelief in Jesus' name. Help her believe you. Mama kabakiti. For he was wounded for our transgressions. He was bruised for our iniquity. The chastisement of our peace was upon him. And by his stripes ye were healed. Ye were healed. Ye were healed 2,000 years ago. And in Jesus' name be whole. Be healed. Be free. Mama kabakiti. He His own self bare our sin into His own body on the tree. That we being dead to sin should live under righteousness. By whose stripes ye were healed. If you were and you are, you is, in Jesus' name. Jesus' name. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. More, Lord. Thank you, Father. Trust you, I thank you, Father. Thank Him for healing you. Thank Him for healing you. Yes, thank you, Lord. Kokoba sabayate. Start to do things that you couldn't do before. That's an act of faith. You start to do things that you couldn't do before. The power of God will move on that. He sees faith. He honors faith. He honors the Word. Amen? Yeah. I was all chucked out and pooped out today. Thought, oh my God, how am I going to preach? I did a good job, you said? Well, thank you, eh? I like you. I want you to sit up here tomorrow. I'll preach to you. Ala basipito. You know what? God gave me the grace because I obeyed His word. Said, whatever, God, you're in control. You've got enough grace for me. You're not going to drain the lights in heaven. Give me the grace I need. Amen? Praise God. Amen. I need more, more rope. You know more? Come on over here. Come on over here. Let's, we're all family. Amen? Glory. Glory be to God. Hallelujah. Get ready to receive because, you know, when we're coming up here, we're, we're stepping up to receive. There's nothing too, there's nothing too difficult for God. You know, He's going to turn that frown upside down. Hallelujah. Habakito. Come on. Look at me. God's got your number. Amen? Yeah. You know what? You're going to surrender? Surrender your life to Jesus? You're going to fully commit to the Lord? Yeah? Amen. You know what? Because He'll change things. Amen? He'll trouble your troubles. Yeah? He will. Amen? Praise God. You look like you're going to laugh and cry at the same time. Amen? It's okay. It's all right. You know what? Surrender. That's what comes to me, surrender. Want to pray with me right now? Just repeat what I said. Father, I surrender my will to you. I surrender my life to you. Wash me in your blood, Jesus. Take away this hurt and pain. Only you can. Habashiko mosi kayo. Be loose. Be loose. More, Lord. Flutter. Flutter. Yamando kokaba sibayate. Yamanda bakiki bosika ba riaba la bo shida yoto. Labarimo toboko kobi yate. Yaba robo koki yaba sikaba ba yate. Thank you, Lord, I take away all the hurt, all the pain, in Jesus' name. I cast the spirits of torment out. I cast the spirits that have been manipulating her mentally, emotionally. Be loose, be free, in Jesus'. In Jesus' name. Every hurt, every pain. Go. Be washed with the blood of Jesus. Be cleansed. Be free. Be free. Daddy's giving you a big embrace. He's giving you a big, big hug. Amen? You know what? I want you to give her a big hug right now. Lord, let that hug be from you, Father. Let that hug be from you right now. Let that hug. Because when you hug us, Father, all the ugly things ooze out of us. And your love heals us. There you go. Amen? Love is healing you. Love will keep you. God's love faileth not. Things aren't going to get worse, they're going to get better. You may not see that right now, but they are. And as you step into the things of God, you watch. Your life is going to be like a flower that unfolds. There's going to be a fragrance of His presence coming from you. He's going to put a song in your heart. Because you've been singing the devil's blues. But God's going to put a song in your heart. Amen? Be free in Jesus' name. Praise God. God bless you. Amen? Praise the Lord. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. Kurama sabakitisi. Kabarubo tiba siboyate. I'm just going to pray for you. I only pray what God puts on my heart. And it just said, more light. You know, so shine on, you crazy diamond. That'd be a good song. Shama kikobo sabayate. In Jesus' name. More, Lord. Let her be a brighter light wherever she goes, whatever she does, Father. Illuminate yourself through her. Illuminate yourself in a greater way. Let your glory be dispersed through her in Jesus' name. That's all he said, Lord, brighter light. Shine on. More, Lord. More of your presence. Man, I felt a little wobbly there. Amen? I like that. Praise God. The Lord will put a, you know, a little wobble in your walk every now and again. I just felt that. Praise God. Praise God. You know, there's nothing too difficult for the Lord. Yeah? You feel like giving up, don't you? Amen? I didn't know that, but God knows. Amen? Wow. And you know what I seen as I stepped towards you? I seen a wall and it had black joints in the morning. And you know what happened? Just crumbled. You know what that means to me? You got a breakthrough. Yes. Don't thank me, thank God. You got a breakthrough. Amen, thank God. Say, thank God for my breakthrough. Yeah? Amen. Thank God. We thank God with you for your breakthrough. Because what I seen in the Spirit was something that you couldn't possibly overcome. But God's going to overcome for you. It's going to, it's going to be a breakthrough. It's going to break and it's going to be through. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. God bless you. God bless you. God bless you. And don't give up. Quitters don't win and winners don't quit. Glory be to God. Truth goes marching on. And you shall know the truth and the truth shall set you free. Amalamasi kabakoko. God loves you. God's not mad at you. God's not mad at you. Look at that. Amen? Amen, God not mad at you, girl. Daddy's girl. Your daddy's girl. Amalamashito. More, more, more. Yeah, give her a holy hug. Come on. Give her a big daddy's, daddy's hug, right there. Hang on. Kabakito. Praise God, bud. Amen, God bless you, brother. Lord, bless my brother right now. Yes, Lord. Lord, I thank you right now for strength. Lord, I feel that there's been discouragement on him. And Lord, that's a spirit. That's a spirit of heaviness. And Lord, you said there's a good exchange rate for that. You said you'd give us a garment of praise for the spirit of heaviness. I cast that off of him in Jesus' name. Be gone. You're exposed. And Lord, even joint pain, I command it to dissipate in Jesus' name. All pain has torment from the enemy. I cast it off. I cast the spirits off that are manipulating his body, in Jesus' name. Father, I thank you for release, Lord. It was like a blanket lifted off of you, man. The enemy was robing you with thoughts that are contrary to God's. And there was like a, a heavy robe on you of darkness. Be loose. You're free. That was the discouragement of the enemy against you. But you're free in Jesus' name. Because God exposes things. And when He exposes things, they're gone. And you're free. Amen? Amen, thank you, Jesus. Kura basabiyate. Yes. Amen. Hallelujah. Kokoba sakemando bobo labashiba yate. Amen, thank you, Lord, for my sister. Thank you, Lord. You're not alone. The Lord says you're not alone. He's with you, He's for you, He's not against you. Mamando bobo kabekia kamasabayate. God says the things that have been working against you are going to end up working for you. God says He wants you to rest in Him. God says He wants you to rest in Him. He says, enter My rest. My yoke is easy, my burden is light. I did all the work. Now you trust in Me. You believe what I say. You quote what I say about you. You quote what I say about situations and circumstances. There's nothing too difficult for me. And the things that have been working against you will end up working for you, says the Lord. You're going to have great peace and people are going to be attracted to that peace in your life. They're going to say, why are you so peaceful? And you're going to say, it is well with My soul. Because of Jesus, the Prince of Peace ruling in my heart. Glory. The peace that passes all understanding. For some reason, God tells me, you owe no man anything. You owe nobody nothing. I paid it all, He said. He's bringing clarity. In Jesus' name. Yes. Be blessed in Jesus' name. Kokaba satito. Hallelujah. You know what come to me? Action. You're going to step out to some things you might feel uncomfortable. Maybe witnessing to somebody or maybe you've been thinking of doing something, but you're hesitant. You're going to act on it. And you're going to go, wow. Because there was a God then. He's setting you up to do something. And then, like I said earlier, what comes back to me is where there's a action, there's a reaction from God. His presence. The action has to be in line with His word. And He'll never lead you outside of the word. It may be a deed, it may be witnessing to somebody, it may be praying for somebody. Mm-hmm. Stepping out, yeah, amen. And I feel too that the more you step out, the more there's going to be healing manifested through you. Is that something you've thought of? Amen? Pardon me? Have you told that years ago? Well, I'm going to believe God and it's going to manifest. Amen? Lord, in Jesus' name. I pray, Lord, that she will step out in that healing anointing. I pray, Lord, God, in Jesus' name. We all have healing in our hands, but Father, you spoke this into her life earlier. And Lord, it's been brought to my remembrance, your remembrance, in the Spirit. And you're going to manifest it through her. Because it's all for your glory. We all have different gifts and mantles and ministry spots. And I released this healing ministry in her life, Father, that it will manifest through her. And when she prays for people, they will be healed in Jesus' name. And it will be what you do automatically, Father, it won't be something that surprises you. As she steps out in obedience to you, Father, in Jesus' name. I thank you for it. I thank you for it, Father. You know, at the end from the beginning. And I believe it's her time for the fruit of this ministry to manifest in Jesus' name. Bring glory to your name, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen? Amen? And I feel too, you're going to feel warmth in your hands when you go to pray for somebody. And that will be... Is that right? Amen? Amen? Are you ready for it? You're going to feel like, I feel warmth in my hands sometimes. It's like I got other things on me. And that's the manifestation. I don't go by that, but God always lets me know that I want to pray for somebody for healing. I can feel that heat. And so I just change whatever I'm doing and go with that flow. And so when you pray or you're somewhere and you can feel that heat, you know, you'll just know and you'll feel it, you'll feel it. And I just transfer that in Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Burn through her in God's Jesus' name. Amen? Amen? In glory. Habakoko. Amalamosibi yate. Amen? Praise God. Glory. Lord, bless my brother. I thank you, Lord. He's a warrior. God says you're a warrior, brother. And it's not by chance that you are attracted to praise. Because that's where God dwells. He inhabits the praise of His people. And that's where you hear His voice. That's where you feel your greatest peace in life is in the presence of the Lord. Shama kokoba sibuyoto. The Lord says you feel inadequate. The Lord says you feel inadequate, but you're not. You're a functioning part of this assembly. You're a functioning part of the body of Christ. You're right where you should be in Jesus' name. God says, "Don't look left, don't look right. Do what I've called you to do. Be what I've called you to be." You're a praise warrior. Amen. That's a new one for me. Habakiko. Eh? Shama lamatito. I break every false expectation on his life too, Father. I break every work, every weight of work that's ever been put on him, every legalistic thing, Lord. You don't do enough. You don't say enough. You don't do... Lord, I break all that in Jesus' name. Be loose! Be free! Be a functioning member of the body of Christ where God has positioned you and function for the glory of God in Jesus' name. We need you to function for the glory of God in Jesus' name. Ha ha! Motakabekiti. Glory be to God. Amalama hiti baba kete. Yeah, we got a little Pentecost going on. Moko baba kiki mama mayata. Moko baba kiki mama yanda. You know, lady, listen to me for a minute. I see the Lord says that your prayers are like a hammer breaking things into pieces. And that desire in your heart to praise from the Lord. And sometimes you see things in the spirit to pray for. It's like that hammer in your hand busting hard places in the spirit. Yeah? Don't think nothing's happening, because things are happening. Amen. Uba kia kama sabatito. And you have a mercy ministry too. Yeah, you can show love to people that other people don't ignore. Hallelujah! Give it away, and you'll get more. Give it away. Hey, hey. Amen. Kunda bakito. Hallelujah! Glory be to God. Sometimes the Lord, what do you need from me? Lord, right now, I pray for a healing miracle in Jesus' name. I pray for a medical miracle. Lord, I know people that are booked for surgery. They went in and said, "There's nothing there." And Lord, I pray for a medical miracle in Jesus' name. I pray for healing in the name of Jesus. Lord, you told me to ask her, and I know why you told me to ask her, to agree with her. And I agree with her that you're our healer. You're our source. Whether we get healed through man, surgery that you gave man the ability to do, or whether you intervene and healed by the power of your spirit. You're our healer in Jesus' name. And she's healed. She's in your healing hands in Jesus' name. And I agree with her and I agree with the word. You said, "If any two agree on earth as touching anything, it shall be done." And we thank you. It's done in Jesus' name. Amen. Hallelujah! Glory! Kurabasate. Justin, I wanna pray for you. I just got, you know, the Lord give me a little something for you. Praise God. Come on over here, brother. I just feel the Lord saying, "Get ready for new beginnings." Amen. I don't, I'm excited for that. Amen. He's down with that, he says. Amen. And Lord, whatever that may be, Father, everything you do is exciting, Father. And Lord, I released him into that new beginnings, Lord, whatever that may be. And when you do new things, Father, we're excited about those things. And Lord, I pray to stir up the excitement in his heart for the promise that you've given him. There's new things, Father. New relationships, new doors. Habakiko mosabatito. New anointings. Ashakama kaba yate. Ashakama kaba kabi yate. Oroma sabalebi shiko moyate. And you know what else he says to me right now? There's more creative ability being poured out onto you, so you can go into new things too. Amen. See, I wouldn't have just thought that as soon as I got my hands on it, Holy Spirit started that. Shakabokoko. Imama yate. Amen. Yeah, man. And you know, I don't know if you've ever written songs and given them to people, or even for yourself, or felt to give somebody a song. I don't know. That come to me too. A new song for somebody. Amen. You know, there's some people that just write songs and give them to people that can... Amen. And I released him in that too, Lord. Creative ability, that area. Music, art. Shiko basibo tiabatito. Amen. We need our artists in the body of Christ. Musical. Creative ability. Lord, let them blossom. There's so many people that take their abilities and gifts outside of the body. He wants to stay in the body. Bring glory through my brother in Jesus' name. And do we just release it in Jesus' name? Hallelujah! New level in Jesus' name. New level, new life, new creative ability in Jesus' name. New hope. New help. Shakama. You know what? He's gonna give you a new sight, new insight in Jesus' name. I bless you in that, in Jesus' name. Man. Give me some of that. Shama koko baba yate. Give it all to Him, Lord, in Jesus' name. Uba sabayate. Uba sabayate. Uba sabayate. And you know, I feel there's gonna be a traveling companion coming into your life in this world. And I release that to you in Jesus' name. I release that in Jesus' name. Thank you, Lord. Amen. Bless him, Father. It's been a blessing to many. Bless him, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen. Habasito. Praise God, sister. Come on over. Kuramas. You're coming together, aren't you? Tag team? Come on over. Let me pray for you. You don't want her getting the blessing by herself, eh?
Right.
That's okay. Amen. There you go. Thank you, Lord. Kuko masabayata. Kuko masaboyoto. Kuko masabakoko. I just seen a cloak, a robe, come around both of yous. Pull you in even closer together. You're gonna unite in whatever it is God's called you to do and be. Thank you, Lord, for that anointing, Lord. Bind them to the altar of God. Bind them to the will of God. Robe, robe them together in your love, in your plan, in your purpose, Lord. Let them draw off of that anointing on both of them, Father. Lord, they'll think the same thoughts at the same time. They'll know what's right. They'll know what's wrong together in Jesus' name. Lord, I seen that robe coming around them. It was red, and it represented the blood, Lord. And the blood unites, and the blood brings life. And they're gonna live in life together, and they're gonna live closer than they ever have in Jesus' name. Shikama habiyoto. In Jesus' name. Make them one! In Jesus' name. One in deed, one in thought, one in action, in Jesus' name. Glory. Glory. Hallelujah! Hallelujah to you! In Jesus' name. Praise God. Everybody wants some now, eh? Shama koko basibo yate. What about me? Praise God. Come on up here, sister. Halabashito. Lift your hands to the Lord. Amen. Hallelujah! You know, God's given you gifts and abilities for the kingdom of God. You know what? You need to just let it go. Be free. Be free in who God has... Hone in on what God has called you to be. Hone in on what God has called you to be. Set your face like a flint. Ashama hokobo sibiyata. Moroma sibatiya kamata manta bobobo yoto. Moro baba kia ma kaba yate. Moro masa kabata bolo bo yoto. You know what? Your gifts are gonna surprise people. Because you're gonna be like under the radar, and then all of a sudden, you're gonna manifest your gifts. You know that? That's what it's gonna be. You're gonna be like under the radar, manifest your gifts for the glory of the Lord. In Jesus' name, so be it. So be it, Lord. So be it! And Lord, right now, I pray. Lord, anything that's hindered her from believing in herself, be gone! In Jesus' name. Be loose! In Jesus' name. All fear and intimidation and every word of death that was ever spoken over your life, I declare crop failure in Jesus' name. And I declare a harvest of life. I declare every word of death spoken over you dismissed and dismantled in Jesus' name. And I declare life, abundant life. The words that I speak unto you, they are spirit and they are life. You live in the life of God, and you give glory to God, and you blossom for God, and you live for God. Shakaba koko masibaba yate. And you know what? He's your shield. He's your buckler. He's the lifter of your head. Your head is gonna be high, and the high praises of God are gonna come out of your mouth. Habashiko mosabayate. You're gonna bust out. Like a little stick of dynamite. Ha, ha, ha on the devil. Ha, ha, ha on the devil. Shama lamatibaba siboyate. So be it! Little glory stories in your life. Amen. Hmm, you watch. Amen. Kuka basabayate. Praise God. Amen. I guess we're not gonna beat the Baptists tonight. Any restaurants open? Amen. Just kidding. Come on, sister. Praise God. Hallelujah! Amen. God has given you a beautiful voice. And you're a beautiful person. And every good gift is from above. It comes from the Father of lights, with whom there's no variation or shadow to. Play skillfully. Your life is an instrument for the Lord. And as you pray and play for the Lord, you will play skillfully, and you'll sing skillfully, and the anointing will increase. And the anointing will be like a magnet that draws people into the presence of the Lord. Because you're singing for Jesus. You're singing to Jesus. And you're singing through Jesus. Shibaba kike masabatobota yate. And as you become freer and freer, and as you worship in liberty, Amataboko sakabayate, the anointing will flow through you. You will go into freestyle worship, and you will take them into the throne room of God. Shama koko basabatiyate. And they will be touched by the presence of the Lord. Shama hobaki kiamasabatito. Monoma kaba yate. Don't worship the gift. Worship the giver of every gift. Shama lamatokoba sabayate. And don't let people exalt you with your gift. You give glory to God. Honor God with your gift, and He will honor you. Mosshakaba robo sibayate. You know what? I seen you getting in the spirit and singing in the spirit. And I seen you taking people in the spirit. Hallelujah! Bringing them into this presence of the living God. And everything they need is in that presence. Hmm. Kuko basabayate. Kuko basabayate. In Jesus' name. Be blessed. Be blessed. In Jesus' name. You know what a gift can bring you before great men? And as we honor God with the gifts that He's given us, He'll bring increase. Amen? He'll bring increase in every area. And when that, and that's like a fragrance that comes off of us. It's the anointing. It's the anointing. And that's what's gonna happen. I was, as we were in worship, I seen my sister up there, and she was worshiping, and she let free in the spirit, and started worshiping in the spirit, and started singing in the spirit. Amen? And things started snap, crackle, pop, if you know what I mean? Because that's what the anointing does. Because we all come in. We all come in to that. We celebrate that gift. We're going into the presence of God. And that's what a worship leader does. They go, "I'm going into the presence of God. Are you coming with me?" That's what worship leaders do. It's not about them being worshipped. It's about us going into the presence. Amen? See, I'm taking you into the Word with what I can do, so you can get what you need through the Word, and that's what worship leaders do. Amen? That's what every gift does. Amen? That's what they're, and the more we honor God with the gift, the more He honors us. Yeah? And that gift will take you places, and the gift makes you look good. Amen? I feel so inadequate. And I love it. I feel inadequate. I've even said, "Lord, why would you call me?" I didn't want to be called to this, but you called me. And I'm glad I always feel inadequate. Because I trust in Him. I can't do nothing without Him. Without Him, I have nothing. With Him, I have everything. I'm serious. Don't take the gifts of God for granted. Honor God with everything He's given you. Honor each other. Respect each other. Don't worship each other. Honor each other. Amen? Thank you, Lord, for this brother. God says he's rebuilding. He's rebuilding. I don't know. There may be trust issues. I don't know. He's rebuilding. He's restoring. And you know what he says? "The best is yet to come." Hamakika basaboti abala botoyate. Amarobotabati abala bosshiko bobobo yoto. Hallelujah! Give him more, Lord. Give him more. Give him more. Give him more. Lord, give him healing. Give him health. Give him longevity. Give him wealth right now. I curse everything that's manipulating his body. Be loose! Be healed in Jesus' name. Amen. Curse all sickness and disease in Jesus' name. Amen. See that? God's rebuilding. God's restoring. Amen? I don't know what God's gonna do. I just got that show-up, blow-up anointing. Amen. Don't be afraid. God loves you. Whoa. Eh? Jesus loves me. This I know. Remember that? Well, the Bible tells me so. His love is real. His love is real. Mama kabakiki basabato yoto. Sure. Relax. There you go. Relax. Don't pray. Just... God wants you to receive. There you go. Look at that. Whole lot of shaking going on. Mama kapakoko. More. Yep. See, that's God. There you go. Shama lamondo more. Come on. It's all yours. He loves you. Don't pray. You're receiving. Shama lamasito boko yate. There it is. Woo! Ha, ha, ha. Moko moka babayate. There it is. Yeah, all that tension's gone. Look at you now. Moko baba... Look at me, everybody. Shama lamakito. I'm free in Jesus'. Amen? More! Whoa, yeah! Come on, take it. Glory, yeah! Come on now! Woo! Shama lamakiti. Amen? You be free in Jesus' name. You be free. Be free. Be free. Ha, ha! Glory! Moka matito. Woo! Untie my bowtie. Who stole my highend eye? Shakamasiko. Praise God! Oh my goodness. You Pentecostals are hard to get out, but then you're hard to get home, eh? Come on! Praise God. You want a little of that? I'm getting out of here. Come on. Last call. Praise God. Lift your hands. Shomo kobo boyoto. You know what God says? You're gonna, you're gonna grow and show. Mashakabekiti masabayate. You're gonna grow and show. And people are gonna say, "Wow, has he ever grown in the Lord?" Wow! Shama lamande. You know why? Because the Word works. The Word's changing you. The Word's changing the way you think, the way you act. All the motives of your heart too. And you know, it's not about you. It's about Jesus. Yeah? There's a shift going on, buddy. Amen? Glory be to God. Habakika masabato botayate. Enjoy life, my friend. Enjoy the journey with Jesus, bud. Amen? Look at her. She's trying to fly like an eagle. Kuko basabayate. Amen? Hallelujah! Sorry. Kuno masabayate. Give him more, Lord. Just shake his shoes. Woo! More! There. Amen? Just receive it. There it is. It's okay. Let her have some more of that. God's doing a good thing. Amen? See? Her eyes are closed the whole time. She doesn't care who's around her, and that's what, that's what it's all about. It's her and Jesus. I don't care what you think about me. Really, I used to when I first... I wouldn't even lift my hands, but now I don't care. If God wants to do something to me, do it. Because you know what I need. Amen? Give it to me. Suck it to me, Jesus. Amen? Praise God. Lord, give her a little more. Yeah? Yes. You know what? God says you're loved. You're loved more than you can imagine. You're loved more than you can imagine. You know that? Love conquered all those things that harmed you and hurt you. Love is... Whoa! Man. What kind of church is this? It's a Lutheran church. Isn't that what the sign said, eh? Anyway, praise God, everybody. I'm, I'm getting out of here. Thank you all for having me. Appreciate it. I'll turn this over. We got something going on. Oh, it's a fan.
Amen. Praise the Lord. Hallelujah! Amen. Our sister got some wine there tonight. New wine. New wine. Hallelujah! That's the new wine. I don't know who drove her. Someone else better drive her home. As if she drove herself. I mean, someone drive her home. Amen. For those of you that are left, I want to remind you tomorrow is Sunday. Service is at 1:00. Potluck is right after church. Also, for the men that are going golfing, you're not gonna have time to go home to get your clubs. You're not gonna have time to go home to change your clothes. So you might wanna dress in something a little bit comfortable or whatever have you. Not too comfortable. It's still church. No, just kidding. Dress comfortable. Dress, dress down, Pastor Brian said. Amen? So come on out. We're gonna have a great time. It's a great start tonight. Just to thank the Lord. Amen? Great to be in the presence of the Lord. God bless you tonight in Jesus' name.